PM, I'll get this meeting started, this meeting, get, bring this meeting to order. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge such at this time. I don't see if Owen or anyone is online.
Yeah, Owen.
Oh.
Oh, Owen's on.
I don't know, I'm not hearing any, okay. Please refrain from using flash photography. We have set up overflow out in the hallway, and the TV out there should broadcast what's happening inside for the folks in the, in the area. So, we apologize, I wish we could fit you all in the room. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line. Zoom meeting ID, 897-1229-3538. Password, BORN, all caps. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. Okay, so let's start with a moment of silence to recognize our troops and our public safety personnel. Salute to the flag.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Okay. So, public comment on non-agenda items. Public comments are allowed for up to a total of 12 minutes at the beginning of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for comment, and board members are unable to respond due to the requirements of the open meeting law. Do we have anyone signed up for a public comment on non-agenda items this evening? Okay, hearing none, we will move right on to our public hearing for continuation from our 8/26/25 public hearing in consideration of an applicant for a Section 15 All Alcohol Beverage Retail Package Store license. We filed with the town of Bourne on June 27, 2025, from MB Spirits LLC, doing business as MB Spirits, two factory outlet way, suite 2B in Bourne. Okay, so, here we go. Pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, the Bourne Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority, I hereby resume the public hearing that we had continued from August 26. As a reminder, this hearing is for the licensing authority to consider the following. Item 1, review the ABCC decision dated April 29, 2025. 2, consider the ABCC recommendation to grant the application filed by MB Spirits LLC, DBA MB Spirits, two factory outlet way, 2B, Bourne, Mass, originally denied on January 3, 2023 by the Select Board, and to remand the matter to the Select Board for further hearing. And, item 3, consider the application for a Section 15 All, sorry, All Alcoholic Beverage Retail Package Store license, refiled with the town on June 27, 2025. The town has reviewed written correspondence since August 26, which I am entering into the record of this hearing. Now, I will provide the applicant an opportunity to speak if there is new or additional information they would like to include for the hearing. Okay.
Good evening, John Ida, Derek Kulkian Miller, 28th St. Street in Boston, on behalf of the applicant, MB Spirits LLC, doing business as MB Spirits. Joining me again this evening is Michael Clark, Jamie Kanin, and I know that Amir is somewhere, Amir Pajotovic is in the, Carter coming in, he's the proposed manager of record.
Could you please speak up, people in the room, I have a hard time here.
Yeah, I'll do my best, all right. Do you want me to start over, or?
I'm sure, just, yeah, just pick up where you left off.
Yep, so just introducing the, the team here, again, Mike Clark, Jamie Kanin, and Amir Pajotovic, who's the proposed manager of record. I think last, when we left, this board wanted some further information on a couple matters. One, they were looking for some guidance instruction, just generally on the public need matter, and second of all, whether there was any further information regarding the Mass DOT taking of this location. I believe the board received some information today, same time, or around the same time that we received information, and we are understanding that the Mass DOT had sent a letter indicating that the building which we're proposing to place this license is intended to be taken by eminent domain. My position to that is we are at the point where we thought we would be at some, you know, in the, in the future, so obviously, timing is everything, I haven't had too much time to dissect this and go through it, but ultimately, the long and short of it is, it doesn't change anything in terms of our application. And I can certainly explain my position on that, and why I think we have not only case law, but ABCC decision and statutes on our side for that. So, I would liken this to a application where, where this submission is a short-term lease or a lease, whose term may be for a few months, or for a year, or whatever it may be. Those applications are considered valid, they'd be reviewed by the ABCC, taken into consideration. Similarly, with this matter, we don't have a set time of when this taking is proposed to happen, so what we have in front of us is, we have an application, we have a legal right to occupy the building, that hasn't changed, so for all intents and purposes here, we intend to go forward with the application, and we believe very strongly that, and I'm confident that if the application and the board tonight were to approve that application, that the ABCC, after their thorough review, would also grant that application, as it stands. The ABCC doesn't look into the future of what ifs, what happens to that tenant, if they're out in three months, or six months, or one year. If that is the case, there are different avenues by which you can go through. In the case of a landlord tenant, if it's a tenant that has a lease, that they no longer have the right to occupy that licensed premise, the ABCC has, time and time again, provided decisions, giving that licensee ample opportunity to move that license. At a minimum, they give six months to that licensee. It's, could be further extended, if there are other circumstances. In this case of a taking of an eminent domain, there's actually statute, and, under Mass General Laws 138, it actually establishes what happens if a licensed property is taken by eminent domain. If that is the case, the ABCC grants that licensee up to four years to relocate that license. So again, there are several circumstances, and in this case, what we don't have, even though it's confirmed that the building where this is located is intended to be taken, what we don't have is the timing of that. Again, we're just getting word of this today, of a formal written notification, and I don't know that, perhaps the board has more information on it, I don't believe they do in terms of what came from Mass DOT, but my understanding is there's no set timelines or dates in terms of when that taking, taking is, is to happen. So what I would say is, in front of you is an application, we still have the legal rights to occupy that building, that has not changed, and again, I with, with every confidence believe that if the board were to approve it, they would not be, it would not be denied at the ABCC for those grounds. I did provide a memorandum, I know the, the board was looking for some guidance, Ms. Angelo was looking for some guidance. I would say you really have to go no further than the ABCC decision. I did provide some additional information on that, but I think that is pretty on point, based on the facts of this matter, and, and this is our fourth hearing now, on this application. I would say, you know, again, and as, as your town council indicated, it's really a review of the application of this applicant for a license at this specific location. Again, not, not talking about competition, it sounds like, since the last hearing, there was a lot of people that, all of a sudden, they came out of the woodwork, maybe they had other plans, still summertime, a couple weeks ago, and now they decided to show up and write letters in opposition. I can assure you, again, it's, it's no different than what happened before with the competing package stores, saying they, it's not needed for the town, it's against the public need. Again, I caution the board to not consider those, because the ABCC determines they should not be considered as a valid grounds for denial of the license. We really need to focus on the type of operation that's run here. So, MB Spirits is a dedicated full package store. You don't have that in the two closest stores, One Stop Convenience, and you don't have that at Yield Spirit Shop. Both of those are kind of hybrid stores. One is a general store, Yield, Sandwich Shop is a, is a general store, I think it's Discuss It General Store, it's a combination store, and One Stop Convenience, in its name is, is a convenience store. So, there's nothing like that in this location, you have to go over four, five miles away to get anything like what MB Spirits is offering here. In addition, at, at the end of last meeting, Ms. Angelo, you indicated, you know, you lumped together Liberty Warehouse Liquors, I think, in the comparison, saying it's, it's in the same area as this location, and, and I think you did so because the square footage of Liberty Warehouse is over 15,000 square feet, that's 30% larger than what's being proposed here, but you were trying to say, hey, we already have 21,000, 22,000 square feet of package stores, we don't need another 12,000 square foot package store. But again, that's not a comparison that should even be in the same consideration, that's in downtown Bourne. If you want to talk about the stores in downtown Bourne, there are four within points, you know, less, about a half a mile to a little over a half a mile radius. So there's definitely a saturation of package stores in downtown. Likewise, on Route 28, there's a saturation of package stores in about a half mile to 0.6 mile radius on the three stores on MacArthur Boulevard. So again, that's not what we have here. This store is a standalone store, it's different than the others, and there's nothing like that in the area, and I think it's going to be a tremendous benefit to the community. Market Basket and MB Spirits is continuing to be dedicated to this location, to the community, and they're going to do everything in their power to make sure that the store is up and running, and if it needs to be relocated in the near future, whether that's sooner than later, they are committed to doing that. I also provided some information on what happens if the store needs to be relocated, and can that be approved based on a floor plan alone, and the answer is yes. So, again, we fully expect to have to come back in front of this board to review the new location of where that would be on premise, but the upside is, they have the entire parcel, and they have, you know, different alternatives where that location can be, where the store could be placed on that location. I'm sure you may have some more questions for me, happy to answer those, and I'd also, obviously, have an opportunity to reply once the public speaks as well. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, so, I will now open to public comment, so I will reopen the floor to public comment. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. Before you speak, please state your name and your street address. If you have questions for the applicant, please address them to me, the chair, and I will ask the applicant to respond when your comment time has concluded. Okay, so, does anyone here want to speak on the Market Basket license? Sir? Go ahead.
Good evening, board. Russell Salamoni, Greg Gables Market, also resident at 3 Canterbury Lane here in Bourne. On behalf of the nine liquor store license holders here in town, we wanted to just share with you what we put together in the brief timeframe from the last meeting on August 26. So, in that short timeframe, we petitioned in our stores, you know, against this license, and within 13 days, as a collective group, we came up with 2,800 signatures that were signed in our buildings here in town. So, you know, that doesn't hold up to the 11,000 that Market Basket collected over, you know, whatever that period of time was in, in various stores, but, you know, we thought it's very compelling that, you know, just in 13 days, our community came together and signed this petition. So, I do have hard copies here with the jump drive, so I wanted to drop that off today, and, you know, we can send electronic as well. Also, I did share an overlay map that I had sent, which basically showed the current existing stores, the proposed location, and the distances to. And again, we've heard, you know, competition, it's not about that. At the end of the day, the need is fulfilled, you can look at, at the map, and again, I feel our 2,800 in 13 days is pretty compelling to what our locals in our neighborhoods want to see and want to hear. So, I appreciate the opportunity to get up, and wanted to share this with you.
Thank you, you can bring it, I will take that and put it into record. Thank you very much. Okay, do we have any, anyone else for public comment regarding the Market Basket matter and the license? Anyone out in the hall, possibly? I know we have quite an overflow crowd. Don't be shy, if you're out there.
Yeah, it's like a 10-second delay.
Yeah.
Let me just ask.
George.
Thanks.
Is there anyone out here who would like to give a public comment for the MB Spirits alcohol license hearing?
Ask people in line.
Is anyone online? Would like to raise your hand and speak on this matter? No?
We're good.
Oh, we do have, okay, come right up.
It's me again.
It's okay.
Mark Sivalinski, Hallifon Road, Sagamore Beach. Not going to bore you with my typical speech about the fact that there is zero need, should this be approved, it's going to be a seismic shift in sales from all the locations in the town to one specific location that we're talking about today. And thirdly, the elephant in the room, which we've already beaten to death, is that we already have more than twice the amount of licenses in this town. The gentleman behind me talks about need, and talks to the board, you know, in a fashion that kind of, I feel kind of is tying you guys up on a legal basis, but when we talk about need, what is need? I mean fundamentally, we need water, we need shelter, we need safety, and food. So, need can be construed many different ways, and we consider it all day long, and try to, you know, come to the conclusion of what the best, best basic need is, but when I look back over the past two weeks, and when I had, you know, congratulated Market Basket on kind of following the rules, what's really come apparent to me today, and hopefully everybody else in this room, is, this isn't about a need for the community, this is Market Basket using the town of Bourne as a stepping stone to get a liquor license, to put in a building that they knew was coming down. Now, I will tell you one thing right now, three things have occurred here. Number one, they, they're pretending they don't know what's going on. Number two, they're brushing under the carpet. Number three, they're just, have no idea what's going on. And anybody on this side of the Mississippi over the last 15 years knows what land was being taken, what buildings were coming down, and we're just going through this ruse, where they're using the town of Bourne as a cog to stick a license in a building in order for them to probably get more money when that building comes down, but we're going to sit here, three months from now, two years from now, back, dealing with a, a building that needs to be rebuilt, and probably dealing with a CAC commission. What are we doing? Why are we even here right now? We're here because they have a powerful attorney that deals with the ABCC, but I would hope that we could, that the board would vote the way they did the last time, put this nonsense in the review mirror, and we can all move on.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much. I see a hand up, I know we're not monitoring it, but I do see a hand up, I will ask you to unmute if you're, you're wanting to speak on the Market Basket matter. You have two minutes, sorry. Patrick Rock.
I'm a sandwich resident, and I have worked at a couple liquor stores, so I do want to bring a different perspective to this meeting, but this meeting from Market Basket, all I've heard was a legal aspect of it, and blah, and whatever. I want to say, as a local business, we contribute a lot more to our communities, we help fund different baseball leagues, local communities show up for the community, and Market Basket is not going to show up for you. Like, yes, you do get a convenient aspect for shopping, everything in one spot, but they will not be funding your student field trip, they will not be funding the baseball league, they are not going to fund your local community drive, so I do think that aspect is going to support local businesses, and not give Market Basket a multi-store chain, an opportunity to monopolize a business in a way, and this is one aspect where community and local businesses matter, and I don't think Market Basket is going to have that capacity to give back to the community the way that local businesses do.
Thank you. All right, anyone? All right, anyone else? Tied in here, sorry.
Good evening, board. Parrish Patel, owner of Seaside Wine and Spirit, residence five, Missoula, in Bourne. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Market Basket is a great supermarket. I'm saying that even I own the supermarket myself, but I think this would stay limited to selling the groceries. Their parking lot is a nightmare all the time, doesn't matter whenever you go. I purchased my business in 2009, literally, I think the owner name was Frank, he literally went out of business. We hustled to run that store, luckily, we brought it back to business, surviving now. I don't think we need any big box store at this point. It's not going to put me out of business, I can tell you that right now, but it's going to take a slot away from every single license we have in town. Two store nearby, gentleman mentioned, convenience store, whatever, but they have a full liquor license, if a customer comes in the stores and buying product, it's made with the liquor, beer, wine, whatever it is. So I request to the board, do not grant the license, support the small business. The lady said on the Zoom call that the local business support the local community all the time, you know, 25 bucks, 50 bucks, 100 bucks, whatever it is, we try to do the best we can. We all go out, whenever they arrange the cleanup, two months, one month, I even send my kids to do it, right? So like, Market Basket doesn't do none of that stuff. I mean, it just, small town, and the big concern, it's, basically, we are the entrance of the Cape Cod. It's not only about the Bourne, people go travel all the way to P-Town, just think about those stores, right? Somebody going to stop at Market Basket, get their groceries, and then, they're going to eliminate one of the stops down the line. We got to protect the Cape Cod as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online in the audience, or out in the overflow? Okay. Oh, okay.
Janine Cassano, Glacier Way, Bourne. Just hoping that you say yes to our liquor license, we've been trying for two years. I'm a happy employee, I know what it's like to run a local business, I ran one here in Bourne for 22 years, I only lost it due to COVID, but I am a happy employee, and I'm, all of our customers are very, very important, and I think 11,000 says something, okay? And I'm happy to hear 2,000 plus support the local business, and my husband will continue to go to the local packy, he refuses to go to a, to Market Basket because of the anxiety of the population, but we have 11,000 people that do want it, that come from other areas, and they're all important to us, as well as the Bourne customers, so we're just hoping for a yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lorda Kenner Fretschel, also work at Market Basket, and there are a number of people from the community that take the commuter bus, the GATTA bus, I think it's called, to Market Basket to do their shopping as well, and they could be doing one shopping deal, they could go there, they could go Verizon Store, they could go to Carter's, hopefully, they could go to Liquor Store.
Okay, so what I'll do now is, I'd like to offer the applicant an opportunity to address the comments, if you wish, and speak on them, and...
Sure, I'll try to be brief, but I think what we heard, it's kind of the same theme, obviously, a lot of people are here from the area package stores, I think you see a lot of the owners here, if not, some of their employees. You know, a couple things to point out, you know, this is our fourth hearing, kind of interesting, again, they weren't here a couple weeks ago, until they were kind of urged to be here. But you've got, you know, opposition driven by Greg Gables Market, interestingly enough, you know, he opposes the 10th license, same way with Mr. Sivalinski opposing the 10th license, saying there's, there's enough, is already in, in town, but neither one of those opposed the application to Catamat Fish. And in fact, I believe a letter of support came in from Greg Gables Market on the Catamat Fish application. So it's not a matter of, you know, competition, it's a matter of, we don't want it to go to Market Basket, because we think it's going to affect our bottom line. I, I think the ABCC saw through that, and realized that was one of the factors, cautioned the board that they should not take that into consideration, I think you're hearing it over and over again, from the audience members, that it is competition. So, you know, that being said, you have to take that for what it's worth. Clearly, it's a public hearing, they have a platform, they have a right, it's their business, they have a right to, you know, protect that, but that's not valid grounds, you know, for denial, and that's what I have, so.
Thank you.
I think that was pretty much the bulk of the conversations.
Yeah, I'd actually, you know, I'm glad you raised your hand, we, I, we have time, and my next comment was to allow anyone a second chance to speak one more time, if you have, if you'd like. Go ahead, come right up to the mic.
I'd just like to make a comment based upon the attorney's comment about me not showing up to oppose the liquor license for Catamat Fish. The original hearing that we had here, I had submitted a letter to the Board of Selectmen stating a number of different things that we're not going to hash out, but what I stated vehemently was that if there was any need at all, it was in Catamat. It's the one, other than Boondale, because we don't have any places to put them, one area of town that we did not have coverage. So, that is my position on that. Secondly, well, I'm just going to, I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Russell Salamoni, Greg Gables Market.
that if there was any need at all, it was in Khatamet. It's the one, other than Bourne Dale, because we don't have any places to put them, one area town that we did not have coverage. So that is my position on that. Secondly, well, I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Russell Salamoni, Greg Gable's Market. Just want to defend that comment. I will support local business. I will support Khatamet Fish. I will support Cape Cod all day long.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, actually, a licensing authority. Follow-up questions, if any. So you're perfect timing, MJ.
I do have follow-up questions because I'm known for my questions. But I want to make a comment because I spent a lot of time today reading case law, decisions by the ABCC. And it's very clear in the case law and in the decisions that if a select board makes a decision based on competition, then that decision is arbitrary and capricious. And that is what they stated that the select board did the first time they viewed Market Basket. And not, I don't feel necessarily that the select board made the decision based on competition. I think a lot of the comments that were made by residents and store owners were relative to competition. And so that record and all the comments that are made in the videos and part of the transcript are all looked at during the appeal. Understanding, and the ABCC is very interesting because there's broad latitude of the licensing authority to make a determination of need based on what the store is going to provide, whether there's a need in the community, and whether, and what their judgment is for the community. But you have to be able, as a licensing authority, to define exactly what need and the basis for your decisions. You can't just say, you can't just say, we think the need is met. You have to be very specific in your decision about what you're deciding and why you're deciding it. So I am going to have some follow-up conversations with questions from Market Basket. But one of the things that I've been considering a lot in deliberating on this issue is the difference between a big box store and local independent shops with unique merchandise. And the model that the Cape Cod Commission has talked about a lot as a Cape Cod model is we cherish our villages. We have our village, our community. We are a village together. We work together. When you have local businesses, what we're looking for is we want money to stay local. We like to invest in each other as a community, and we like the money to stay in the community because that is what makes our community successful. So one of the questions that I would like Market Basket to answer is, other than one-stop shopping convenience, what is your plan to positively impact and give back to the community of Bourne?
That has zero relevance on the application, but I think they have proven themselves to be a pivotal part of this community for the past 13 years. And every community they go in, they make it better. And they also, I want to point out that none of the competing package stores have gone out of business when MB Spirits has been in business.
Excuse me, I'm not talking competition or businesses going out of business. I'm talking about, I'm talking about giving to the sports teams, having the cleanup day, the being there in your community and volunteering in your community and hiring locals.
Yeah, they are active in their communities. I can turn it over to Amir or Jamie, perhaps. I don't know if they have particular instances, but I'm not really sure that that speaks to public need or that, you know. I mean, I think it's, they've been part of the community, like I said, for 13 years. I think they're a vital part of that. They do contribute. They do go out there. They host different events, you know, from the store, promote things. Whether they donate, I can't speak to that. I have no idea what they, if we want to continue it further to find out what they've done in other communities, fine. But I just think that's not relevant to the hearing this evening in terms of that. That doesn't speak to public need.
Okay, so at this point, okay, the licensing authority will now deliberate on the application. I am not closing the public hearing record at...
Hi. We have done community work. I was personally involved with eight first-grade classrooms. And do you know how many first graders fill eight classrooms? A lot. I toured stores and educated them on refrigeration and different meats and cheeses and eggs and produce and uniforms and money and count and change. And so I had teachers coming back the following year so excited that my children talked about this all year long, about their experience with Market Basket. And anybody that has called us for tours and educational purposes, I mean, I can say, I'm the one who did the tours with the store manager. And we had a lot of fun, but the kids learned a lot. They might shop with mommy and daddy, but they were able to go behind the scenes of the meats and the cheeses and the eggs. And so there was, and recycling cardboard and recycling that we do behind the scenes that you don't see. We recycle an awful lot in our store and not just throw it into the dumps, okay? So yeah, I have been personally involved with volunteer work and community service.
Thank you. All right. So at this point, the licensing authority will now deliberate on the application. I am not closing the public hearing record at this time. That way, if the deliberations identify additional questions for or information that we need from the applicant, we will be able to receive those answers or information into the record for our deliberations. Saying that, I will go around and start with my colleagues on the select board. And I don't know who wants to go first. MJ, you kind of started. Do you like?
I'll let someone else ask a question. I have other things I can say.
You have other things, okay.
Yeah, I'll let someone else.
Dean? I guess I could echo MJ's comments about demonstrating a need for the community and speaking a little bit towards how you could fill that need and what you would bring to Bourne and versus, you know, addressing a competition issue while telling us at the same time, this isn't what the decision should be based on. And also, I'm still struggling with presenting a location that is going to require, you know, and you're admitting that there's going to be more hearings and more work in the long run before, if there's changes made. And it's just, I said before, putting the cart before the horse. But as a person that wants, you know, we want to see some plans, and we'd like to see some part of the proposal, I would like to see something more of a Plan B than a Plan A.
So I was the one who requested the additional information with regards to MassDOT and having a definitive answer for whether this property was going to be taken by eminent domain. And in my opinion, I don't think it is in the best interest of this licensing authority to issue a license for a building that is, not is intended, is being taken by eminent domain and is not going to exist. So the convenience piece, although might be temporary, and they might have a legal right to occupy the building, it is not in the best interest of this town because it will become an inconvenience and the need will not exist. And beyond, for this location, I am not, the argument to say, you know, 3,400 people out of the 11,000 is only a very small percentage of the population of the town of Bourne. And not that they're not important to the community. The convenience is, that's a business model. Clearly, people are not inconvenienced with getting liquor because they'd be knocking down our door, asking us to open up another liquor store. And they are not. So yeah, I don't see the public need at this location. It will not exist. It will not be owned by the applicants, and it will not exist.
Thank you. Peter?
I echo what my peers have said. You know, I don't want to beat a dead horse. But I will say that for the record, that Market Basket as a grocer in the town has been great from when Paul Quigley opened up the store to when Ian Harcourt was there. And I met Amir for the first time a couple of weeks ago when I was, when I was looking for something. And I'm like, where the hell is Ian? So, I mean, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to disparage the company as a whole, but I don't think the need is there for, you know, for that liquor store on a location, in that location. I just, I guess, I guess I want to belabor the point. But as a corporation and as, and providing for the community, they've been first rate. I will say that. But like I said, I don't feel the liquor component is needed in that part of town.
So my personal need for one-stop shopping convenience in the town of Bourne is a pharmacy or a bank. So we have, we have nine liquor stores throughout the community. Like, if you're pretty much where you live, you're going to have one within seven miles. We have two small, limited pharmacies with not a lot of hours. So having a pharmacy in our town, which is like a grocery store, you really need it. We really needed a grocery store when Market Basket came here. We had one small grocery store in Pecassett. We had no other grocery store. There was a demonstrated need for a multipurpose grocer in this community. And we thank Market Basket every day that they made the move here because that was, that's a need that we have. So I understand that one-stop shopping can be a convenience and that having it in, sort of within the same parking lot, because that parking lot's pretty big. I don't know how much of that parking lot's going to be left. I don't know how much is of the spaces. So how many spaces are required for this location at 11,000, 12,000 square feet? It's like one space for 380 square feet or something like that.
For the chair, I have just a few questions. Have you guys gone for planning board for site plan approval or special permit modification yet?
On this current site?
Yes.
I think that's already been done, but I can double check. I mean...
No, because I'm just saying this. Let's say the building goes away.
Right, then we'd have to be back, get site plan approval.
You're creating a more intensive use. You're taking away parking. When the parking that was permitted for that property was for the grocery store and the strip mall. But now you're bringing a more intensive use in. So now, all of a sudden, if you're not going to have the parking, and you're getting a parking waiver from it, the Cape Cod Commission goes in and picks it up, you know, under a DRI because you're creating a regional impact, you know, with the intensive use. I mean, these are all things, you know, just going in my head as an old planning board member.
Right. And again, we would address that at planning board. We also, when it was, the site was approved, probably 15 years ago, there was another standalone building that was approved, you know, in the parking lot. So they already had some forethought to do that. It wasn't obviously built. This is, it would determine on, again, the space that's taken, the number of parking that's taken. And we'd have to go through all the boards. Again, you know, that, it's not necessarily germane to this, you know, hearing, but it is something that we will address and obviously would have to address.
Because you're going from retail, I guess retail to retail, but it's liquor. I don't know if liquor is considered specialized retail because as opposed to a shoe store or a baby Corvin store that was the existing use over there.
Yeah, it's driven by the use. I'd have to look it up. I don't, I wouldn't know off the top of my head what the ratio of parking to square footage is on a retail package store. But again, all things we'd have to consider. And if we have to go down that route in the future for another location, we would obviously do that as well.
So MJ, I'll let you finish. Thank you. Peter?
So the issue of Khatamet Fish was brought up as not, you know, being a liquor license, the same thing. And it's not at all the same thing. It's a store that is a fish store that asked for a liquor license in order to be able to have a complimentary offering to their main purpose. And the license that was issued to them was listed in particularly that way. And the people from the public that came to speak in favor of that license spoke about the fact that it was integral to the community, that it would be a benefit to the store, that they would see it as an enhancement of the offering. And the liquor license was limited to 570 or 800 square feet of retail, with a restriction put on the license so that that building could not become a full-service liquor store only. So there were marked differences between the license that was approved for that license and a big-box, you know, major store. And I'm still not sure about the local economy. Like, so one of the problems with the big-box stores is it's not local economy. It's not wages of the workers. It's not reinvesting in the community. It's not, the dollars don't stay local. They go someplace else. And that, that's always an issue for big-box stores. And I think it's, it's a difference. And it's not because of competition. It's because of, you know, shop local, be local, succeed local. The community succeeds. Brian has something to say.
Go ahead. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, he's going to probably tell you.
I didn't see. I was, I was in, listening to MJ over here, and I didn't see you. I got to pay attention to this side of the room. I didn't neglect you. Go ahead.
Yeah, no. Actually, now that we've taken a lap around the board, it's probably a couple of things I want to say.
Yeah, please. You got to speak up, Ryan.
You got to use that loud voice like you're talking to your kids when they're bad.
I'm rarely accused of being quiet, but I get a microphone in front of me, and I've kind of trained myself to be soft. But apparently, it doesn't work.
No, it's for the...
It does, but it's not for the room.
It's not for the room.
It's for the people at home, yes.
Okay. So I just want to reiterate for everybody. I think Ms. Strangela already said it, you know, competition is not an allowable basis, and I think the board has done a pretty good job of that. I just wanted to be clear again on the record as to need, which I think the discussion has highlighted. It is about a public need in this particular location. We absolutely do have a license that is available. And just because the town has a number of special act licenses in addition to its population licenses is not a basis for denial. As much as we want to keep things local, that's really not a consideration of the Liquor Control Act. It really is about providing, meeting the public need for alcoholic beverages. And we can certainly consider the type of operation in terms of what they're providing, the scale that they're providing, the variety of the options, essentially things that tie to the alcoholic options themselves. But, you know, we really are kind of agnostic as to the provider. And I'm not saying this to say that Market Basket isn't a good community member or that they are. I'm just saying it sort of neutrally. This is, this is what we have to consider. Trying to think if there was anything else I wanted to say at this point. I think that pretty much covers it. Obviously, I can answer any legal questions. I did have one question for Market Basket. I did review their memorandum about the taking issue. There's certainly a statute that tells us what happens when we've issued a license. There's no statute that tells us what happens if we haven't issued a license. And there is a distinction in the law. There is no right to a license, and it doesn't really become a property right until you actually get it. I'm just curious if there's any ABCC decisions in the context of we're assessing for the first time the public need and how that's taken into account. And there may not be. I'm just curious if there's something out there.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. In the statute that was presented was for an existing licensee. So we're not there. And that was, I was just trying to point out that if we get to that first point, there's a couple of different ways to go about that. And I was trying to make an analogy. And I was trying to make an analogy, maybe not very well, with the tenant, short-term tenant scenario. And again, I, I've had scenarios where applicants have no lease in effect, they're a tenant at will, and they just need some, as simple as a one-page letter from that landlord saying they have the legal right to occupy, they're on a month-to-month basis or whatever the case may be. And that has been sufficient enough for approval from the local boards and the ABCC. So what I was just trying to get at is, you know, to compare that, that in the event, and now we know that this building is slated to be taken, what we don't know is how far in the future that is. We're already, you know, two and a half, almost three years removed from the first application. This store could have been up and running. I, I don't think it's any fault of anyone per se. I'd certainly say it's not the fault of the applicant for that reason. So it's always been our intention to move this along and, you know, but for the timing and the scenario of things, it's always been our intention to have a store here and not just park a license. That's certainly not our intention at all. So I have not come across any scenarios where, I guess in this specific fact pattern, that it's a, you know, eminent domain taking, taking that is in the future. There are plenty of cases that caution the board about considering the future and that we don't want to open up what's called the parade of horribles, right? So what if this, what if that? I mean, any one of these licenses issued anywhere could lose their lease for one reason or another, or, or, you know, there could be a fire, there could be some catastrophe. And so there has to be avenues by which to protect that license. So again, this is a future, it could be a case of first impression, if you will, of, hey, we're concerned because that building may be taken six months from now, one year from now, do we have the right to oppose it for that reason? And, and all I would say is, you know, if your concerns are, will this get denied and turned back at the ABCC? As I stated before, I have every confidence that if the board were to approve this, it would be approved at the ABCC, just as is. And in terms of disclosures, even with the disclosure, and I'm sure they'd want a summary from me and/or the board as to what is the future of that building. I hope that answered somewhat or gave some context, Brian.
Okay, so I'll go around the board one more time. Brian, oh, go ahead, Brian.
No, I'm fine.
Oh, you're good. Anybody else want to speak one more time and then I'll speak and then we can maybe move on to the vote.
I have a question for, for, for Brian. So I read about the Mormax situation in Framingham, which is kind of interesting. Mormax is BJ's wholesaler that wanted to get a liquor license in Framingham. And, um, I guess they had, their first request was in two thousand twenty and, um, I think it was still a town then. And it was, it was, I don't know when it changed to city, but, um, so, so the local licensing authority denied the license. It was similar, I mean, it was quoted in both the ABCC decision and in what the attorney sent as arbitrary and capricious. And, um, then, so that, it was denied, it went back to the local licensing authority. And then BJ's tried to buy another, like, transfer a license instead of having a new license. And the licensing authority denied the transfer of license and then, so they just got their second round of, uh, ABCC overturning their second denial. And they haven't decided what to do about it. And, you know, in the quandary of, you can make a decision as a licensing board, but, you know, it's difficult.
So did you have a question from Brian?
Yeah, I'm just, is, is this, is this likely, like, I mean, it's, I mean, it, it, we have to really explain, how do we explain our need so that it's not arbitrary and capricious?
How do we write a defensible decision?
Which way?
We haven't voted yet.
Yeah, we haven't voted yet, yes, no.
Yeah, I, I'm not the decision maker. I mean, I can, I can comment on the taking issue. The attorney I had is exactly right. It probably is a case of first impression. There's, um, there's not really a lot out there. So I, I don't have anything to tell you that you couldn't do that and I don't have anything to tell you that you could do that. I will say that, you know, a lot of times we do have to be concerned about dealing in hypotheticals. Actually, if you look at the Ballerin case, you've all heard about the Ballerin factors. One of the things they were thinking about was that it was going to create a hypothetical avalanche of new licenses in that area. And that wasn't okay. But that's, it's a little bit of a different kind of hypothetical than we have here, frankly, where we have notice from Mastot that they're going to take the property. So, you know, this, this really is a, you know, it's, it's kind of a wide-open legal issue. And, um, that's not great for the board in the sense that you as five policymakers have to navigate the public need test and figure out, you know, given this sort of, still, it still doesn't happen, so it is fairly a hypothetical, but a pretty sure one at this point. Is that enough that you feel that there's not a public need at this location because you don't think it's going to happen? Is it, if you make that decision, it's a decision I'm willing to defend. You need to understand that there is legal risk to it because we don't have a court decision saying that we can do that. And we have been told in the past that hypotheticals can be a problem. But it, it's really a decision for you tonight. And if, once you take a vote either way, and I'm not telling you to vote either way, it's not my job, we can sort of talk about, you know, making findings that would support that. But I, I would also caution you on that, you know, you should have a robust deliberation that's sort of telling us what the findings are going to be before we vote. You know, we're not, in other words, we're not going to put the cart before the horse. We need to have the detailed discussion, you know, within the framework, the legal framework that I've described, give the applicant, you know, their fair opportunity, one way or the other. And then if that discussion of the facts and the details lead you to the conclusion that you want to deny, then we can talk about how do we actually, you know, distill that into words that adequately conveys what you deliberated.
Okay. Matthew, go ahead. Public comments, but I will allow it just for, very quickly, if you could.
I just have a question that I'd like to maybe ask the board that maybe you can ask Market Basket. I'm just sitting here, we're talking about need and, you know, when my daughter says, I need, I need, I need, she goes, excuse my English, hella high water to get what she needs. Market Basket portrays this supposed need, so my question to the board is, if there's such a need, can Market Basket please get up and tell us how many current license holders they've reached out to, spoke to, tried to negotiate to buy their license? Because that's what I would do if I'm coming into a new town saying they're pretty much at their, their max. And secondly, I'd also like you to ask Market Basket, when did it become protocol to circumvent the town to go to the ABCC first to get approval for a license before going to the town? Because I can tell you right now, if I'm coming here for a beer and wine license, I would think that the board would look very unapproving of that, of me going behind their back to go to the ABCC first and then come stand in front of the town. So those are just two questions I would hope that they can address.
Thank you. All right, so we need to deliberate.
I guess, in closing, at least in my view, I know what the legalities are here, but we are elected by the people to represent their interests. And I think we know what's in our, that our town's best interest. And what the chips fall where they may, if, if we go one direction and the ABC overturns it, the other one's doing it, it's not us. It's us, the local people here who didn't want it. If someone else says, well, sorry, you're, you know, we're going to issue it anyways, it's on them, it's their conscious, not ours.
MJ, anyone else? We're going to go around one more time and then I'll maybe add a little bit. And then we, we have to figure out what is the reasoning and what is, what are your thoughts? Gene?
Um, I guess I'm still, I'm still having a hard time seeing the need for business at this location in particular. I don't think we're in, we're pondering what ifs totally. These aren't total hypotheticals. This is imminent and that's the language being used, so. And I, I, I am a Market Basket shopper and, you know, I even lived in Lowell and the Acres in, in the eighties, so I've known Market Basket for a long time. And, um, you know, it's, it's always a struggle with neighborhoods. So I really appreciate that and I'm putting a lot of weight on it and I'll leave it at that.
I, I concur. I mean, it's, it's not that it's, it might be taken, it is being taken. And I'm still not convinced that the need is there. The, the convenience piece, that's their business model. That's not a convenience. That's, that's a business model that Market Basket has. So I, I, I don't think that's, that's, that's an argument. This building is going to be demolished. Is it in the best interest of this board representing the town to issue a license to this site that is not going to exist?
Thank you. MJ?
So, um, in the decision from, um, the ABCC, in the appeals decision, says, in Ballerin, the appeals court held that, quote, "Need in the literal sense of the requirement is not what the statute is about. Rather, the test includes an assessment of public want and the appropriateness of a liquor license at a particular location." And then this, then there's a further, in Ballerin, the court identified factors to be considered when determining public need. Consideration of the number of existing licenses in the area and the views of the inhabitants in the area can be taken into account when making a determination, as well as taking into account a wide range of factors such as traffic, noise, size, the sort of operation that carries the license, and the reputation of the applicant.
Yeah. Are you reading off page three of one of the documentation?
I, I'm reading the decision. I printed out the, the actual decision.
Right, I have it up. Yeah.
In my printer. Peter? One more thing, you good?
I'm good. Let's see what that template says.
Um, well, I think I'm going to add just very quickly because I have not spoken. I mean, I think I concur with a lot of what's been said here. I mean, I shop at Market Basket. We can all agree that Market Basket has been wonderful to the community for our groceries and to shop. But for me, it's, it's the same situation, the need, I'm trying to find the need for this, for this liquor store. And then when we talk about the unknowns that are coming with this taking, I mean, it is a building that is not going to exist. And I understand that there is a way, the attorney told us that you, the license can be moved, but, you know, for up to four years. I mean, four years is a long time. You know, that's, that's a long time to go without the license if it's something that we actually needed, right? So there's just a lot of unknowns and I think at this point, I think we've all pretty much shared our, our thoughts. And I don't know if everyone feels comfortable, I think we could probably move on to vote.
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing and then.
Motion to close the hearing.
All right. Motion to close the hearing by Peter.
Is that, do you agree with that? The closing the hearing before we finish our deliberations.
I don't know.
Well, if he gets that to.
I know, I got Peter.
In case the vote surprises us and you want something else.
So we should leave it open?
Yeah.
Why don't we, okay. Why don't we leave it open?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Peter.
Peter withdrew his motion. All right, so, um, so option here we have is approve or not approve the license. Prior to moving the vote to any motion, the board should discuss the specific reasons, of course, and potentially approve or not approve the application to provide a clear statement. Of course, we just discussed that and we went around the room several times and got everyone's opinions. Um, let's see, so, we're not going to close the record. So I'm going to make a move to approve or not approve the application for an annual all-alcohol off-premise package store license for the reasons stated by the select board during this hearing. And further, to authorize and direct town staff and town council to prepare correspondence memorializing the same for transmission to the applicant and to the Alcohol Liquor Beverages Control Commission.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to not approve to the, the reasons you just read.
All right, so we have a motion from Peter. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, a second from Anne Marie.
So your motion is to not approve?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. I will do a roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Five zero zero to deny the license based on.
Can I just interject for a minute? I have all of the discussion. If the board could just give us kind of like a, an agreed-upon list of the specific items and maybe vote those too. I just want to be crystal clear on the record after our last trip to the ABC that, you know, these are the reasons and not just the deliberation.
That's a good, so.
Okay. So we discussed it based on the taking, right? That the property will no longer. Property is being taken.
Being taken.
Property is not going to exist.
The need, the public need, we feel is not there.
And when you say the, the public need is not there, is there any more specific reasons for that? I mean, it, it, I, I mean, if we can get a little more specific into that, I think it would be helpful.
I think there's accessibility for the consumers throughout the town for purchasing alcohol.
For that location.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, what else do we have to add to that?
I don't know if the whole convenience piece, I think that's a business model. I don't think that's considered convenience. I think that's just a business model.
Do you want to add? You always have the, how you'd like to hear it said, seeing as you've read all that case law over there.
Like, so, does our determination of need include an assessment of the public want?
Yeah.
And?
Public want?
I think our determination has been that we have received no expression, I don't know how to say this.
Signic, what, like, are you thinking about a significant emerging need for a?
Well, we have to be able to demonstrate that, that, so we said before that we've, we said before that, um, there were, there are two other, we had, I said before in our decision, there are two other annual alcohol, alcohol retail package store licenses enclosed proximally to the premises, doing businesses, one-stop convenience store and Yol Spirit Shop, which one is within, one is about a mile away and one is about two miles away. And you have to cross the Sagamore Bridge in order to get to it. And that seems to be like not proximity. If anyone lives in this community, I cross the bridges millions of times a day. So, so I think, um, this may seem to the ABCC to be arbitrary and capricious, but this, this community is not a community of one-stop convenience. This is a community of villages and, and having, um, having local independent stores with unique merchandise and valuing that as a value of our community. And I think that. And I think that is a value of our community. And that the public want is demonstrated that that is what the public wants.
Okay. Should that satisfy? Is that satisfactory?
I have no opinion one way or another. This is about what you guys decided. I just wanna make sure that...
Well, we're just making sure you're able to write it.
On what you decided.
Yeah.
Do you want to back, have a motion? Or did the motion suffice that?
Well, the motion was...
Yeah, you guys just did that. If you could just move again, just to, you know, have those be your supporting sort of findings, if you will. As obviously, based upon your hearing record, I think that would be helpful, too.
All right. So, does somebody wanna move those?
Make sure it's clear.
All right. So, we have to revote it, then?
Well, no, it's just a new motion.
Move motion, okay.
Motion to record, to support the supportive findings that were stated by the board.
All right. Motion by Peter.
Second.
Second by Jean. Any further discussion, just for the record? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Okay. So, now we have to move to close the hearing, correct?
No, it's all done.
Close the record, I'm sorry. We have to close the record. No? All right, we're good. All right, just making sure. No, he told me not to.
Thank you.
Can we take two minutes? And also, you're taking eleven AMB out of order and moving up top now?
Yes. So, what we're gonna do, thank you. So, what we're going to do next is where, we do have the hearing, the discussion about the gate. But what we're gonna do is we have licensing down below and they'll be waiting here quite some time. So, if it's all right with the board, and I'd like to take them two out of order. It'll be a very quick...
Oh, it'll be very quick.
Very fast. It's not, it's just licensing. It's just a consent agenda. So, if they're here, so, so, let's see. So, we're gonna do licensing and events very quickly. We have licensing, we have an annual common victualist license for Last Bite BBQ LLC, eight fifty-six Sinek Highway. And we have a, why do I do that first? Do we have the licensee present?
Is George...
Is he here? George? I don't know.
George Leonard?
He was out in the lobby earlier. It'll be very quick.
Is George Leonard here for the licensing for the barbecue?
Oh, there he is. Come on in, George. Here he comes.
Okay.
We didn't wanna make you sit through a lot of the deliberations.
Hi, guys. George Leonard, Last Bite BBQ. Just here standing in front of you for a common vic for down at eight fifty-six Sinek Highway. Bringing my barbecue to this town. I grew up in this town. Many of you guys know me. Just waiting on you guys. I'm ready to open anytime. Just waiting on this license.
Thanks. All right. Thank you. So, why don't we do that motion first? We'll do the license first. So, do we have a motion to approve the license for Last Bite BBQ LLC, eight fifty-six Sinek Highway?
So, moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by MJ, a second by Anne Marie. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Roll call vote, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Five zero zero. We are all set. Good luck opening.
Thank you guys so much. Come on down. I'm ready to open for tomorrow, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Good luck.
All right, we got one more. So, a new multiple one day entertainment license issued to Haunted Harbors for a seasonal attraction at weary travelers' club, seventy-seven Valley Bars Road for the following date, September twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, Friday to Sunday in October from ten three to ten thirty-one and November first. Do we have the applicant? I see someone up there on the screen with the harbor walks. If you wanted to unmute real quick and just introduce yourself and then we can take a look.
Good evening, everyone. Joshua Fletcher with Haunted Harbors. I'm a veteran as well and looking forward to being at the park.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, so, do we have a motion? We have our multiple, again, one day entertainment license for Haunted Harbors. Do we have a motion to approve or deny? Or do we have a motion to approve that? That entertainment license? Move to approve? All right. We have a motion from Jean.
Second.
Second from MJ. Any further discussion?
Just being aware of the noise ordinance, because they did request to stay open until ten PM on Sunday, but at, you know, by our noise.
By the noise ordinance, okay.
Noise ordinance.
Think he must have heard that. All right, so...
Subject to conditions.
Subject to conditions, okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
So, roll call vote, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Five zero zero. Thank you. Haunted Harbors, good luck. We'll get over there.
Fun.
Okay, so, we are good.
Go back to five.
Just make my notes and then we can move on to our next agenda item. Okay. So, next on our agenda is a discussion. It is a request to repair and close the gate at the end of High Ridge Road. I'll start with the town administrator and then we can go from there.
Sure. So, there are, there's a number of documents in your packet tonight. I will not be representing the requister. It's my understanding he's not here tonight to speak for his request. His email to a number of town officials from June sixth is in your packet and describes in his own words why he's asking for the gate to be closed. Also included is the easement that the town was granted for a limited access emergency purposes. I've also included Article Three from the May fourteenth, two thousand and seven special town meeting for an emergency access easement. I've included the transportation comments for the MIPA filing for the Bourndale School regarding some access concerns for the school. And I've included a capital request for fall town meeting to repair the gate for thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So... So, there has also been provided today town council's opinion. And we can, we can certainly discuss the select board's obligation as far as the agreement that the town entered into in two thousand and seven to build the school as a condition to build the school. The immediate decision for the select board is the cost. Right now, the gate cannot be closed. It's broken. So, if the town wants to comply with the easement, we would have to fix it. The easement clearly states that the town is responsible for the maintenance and repair of the gate. If you want to do that, it does meet the capital threshold and a town meeting article would be required. So, I'm not in a position, I'm not in a position, I don't have the budget to do this with, without a capital request. So, clearly, since it has to go on the warrant as a town meeting article, we should talk about the board's policy decision here or discussion here on your position on whether or not you're going to abide by the easement that the town has entered into and fix the gate and close it and use it for emergency access or if you're, if you're not gonna proceed that way.
All right. Well, I guess I will start by, I mean, does town council have anything to add before we talk about this, maybe?
I don't have too much to...
It's on red. And, oh, you got it, okay.
There we go. No, I really don't have too much to add. You know, it's an easement that predates pretty much all of us at this point, but...
Not me.
You know. But, I mean, it's clear from the warrant article and the text of the easement. This limited access easement is granted to the town for the sole use of emergency police, fire, and public safety vehicles to access the school to be constructed, blah, blah, blah. And it's further conditioned upon the town at its sole expense installing and maintaining a locked gate and suitable landscaping around said gate, all to prevent unauthorized access to the right of way in school. That is pretty clear text. And the way we got the right to enter into the school along that route was by agreeing to the easement because those are private ways. So, you know, this was a bargain the town struck some time ago. And the real question is, is are we going to honor it? Because I don't read it as ambiguous.
Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you. The concern I have is, we, I know that the easement in this town meeting, this town meeting article was here because I was on the school building committee that negotiated this. So, I know this has been out there for a very long time. But, we also had a responsibility to fix that gate and we never did. We left it open. And then, over the last ten years at least, people have been going and passing and repassing. Now, all of a sudden, it was when we had a duty to fix it. But, to me, it's unfair to take something away that's been okay and we've been breaking the law for the last ten years and let people go back and forth. You know, it's just, to me, is, we may have a legal obligation, but the moral obligation is, is it was okay for ten years and now we're gonna say, now we're gonna go close it up? You know.
All right, all right, all right. Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I just... And I'll please hold the applause because, you know, this is serious. You know, we gotta make a decision on this. But I'm just saying this, I think we should be looking at a solution to this long term because, I mean, by it being, by leaving it, leaving that open, we've caused wear and tear on High Ridge Road. And High Ridge Road is not, High Ridge Road is not a town road. So, I don't know if it's, I have to go back and read at forty B. Is the developer kept the fee in the middle of the road or is the homeowners association?
It's the developer.
Developer kept the fee in the road. So, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to do something with that. But, I think because of the standard that we've allowed, I think the town should look long term in the taken High Ridge Road, making it a town road. I mean, now, we have, because we've already put the stress in wear and tear on that road. So, I think the town should own it, you know, because we didn't fix the gate when we should have. But that's just one person's opinion.
Okay. Who wants us to start? Go ahead, MJ.
So, I have a couple of questions because I read the Cape Cod Commission comment. It wasn't a DRI, but it was their comment on the school where they said they were concerned about the school primary access being Nightingale. That when they originally started doing Bourndale School, that's where they were gonna have it. And then, then, so, but the state did lots of upgrades to Edge Hill and to that intersection on Sinek Highway. They put in the light, they made the turnaround thing, they made a lot of improvements to make that the primary access for the school. But you need to have a secondary, you need to have a secondary emergency access. What amazes me frankly is that the whole Nighting, that whole development around Nightingale and Desiree and High Ridge would only have that one Nightingale access. Because that, I mean, in my experience of like the nine hundred foot fire hose thing, like, you can't, that's not good to have like only one way into a development. And the original plan, when that was first described, when you look on the Mass GIS, Mass Mapper, High Ridge was supposed to then connect over to Heather Hill and then come out and go all the way around. And that, there's a whole section of that paper, it's like a paper road. It's, it's not there. So, Heather Hill was only ever built to fifty-four and that, or thirty-four. And then, that whole connection, which would have created another way for people to travel around. And so, so, I, I'm concerned about, and then you have, now you add into this whole mix a whole nother the development that's going in there and what's, what's gonna happen with that. So, I, I think my concern is that I'm, I'm not really comfortable with the traffic pattern that was approved and the way these develop, this development was approved and executed that a connection that was supposed to be made doesn't exist. So, because people could go around then. And if you do, if you try to get directions from, I don't know...
MapQuest or something?
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't show, it doesn't show the gate being a way to go. I mean, it puts you out on Sinek Highway and tells you to go around. I mean, but, so, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, is, is, is there anyone here that wants to have the gate closed?
Makes no sense.
No.
Let me go, let's go, let's let you. Go ahead, Anne Marie. Okay, okay. Thank you though.
I understand the gate, you don't want the gate closed. But we have a problem here.
Yeah.
We're, we're not in compliance with the deed.
Yeah.
With the deed. So, how do we address that? Right? How do we address coming into compliance with the deed? Whether we, we are responsible for fixing the gate. That's a given. Whether we fix the gate and keep it locked or open, we have to fix this gate. We are responsible for fixing this gate. It's part of the deed. So... Because now we're opening ourselves up for a lot of liability, right? And the owner of the property requested it. I think it's a real slippery slope to try to navigate how we come into compliance with this deed. And at the same time, the easement, yeah, the easement. Well, it is deed, right? It's an easement.
Yes.
It's an easement.
It's an easement, yeah. At the same time, what has been created as a result of not doing diligence?
My question is a legal, I'm sorry.
Jean, let me let everybody go first and I'll come back to you.
That's right.
But, yeah, following up on Peter's comment, what, what difference does it make if there's been precedent sent by a bad traffic pattern? If we still have an obligation through the easement to have the gate maintained, fix it, then?
I mean, we're not responsible for traffic. You know, we're responsible for... Every time I put this thing in front of me, I get confused. We're not responsible for other people's traffic. Under the easement, we're responsible, you know, for two things. For our vehicles to use it properly. So, that's our safety vehicles and not vehicles that aren't in the easement. And to maintain the gate. Because this is a private way. They, you know, it connects to our driveway, but there's no reason they had to let it connect to our driveway. And it would be an interesting question indeed what they would do if we didn't honor the easement. All I can tell you is that within the easement itself, it says that a violation of the above conditions, the above conditions being a locked gate and suitable landscaping shall constitute a termination of said lease. Now, if people continue to drive down the road, that, that's not the town. But what other actions the landowner or the owner of the way at this point might take or not, I couldn't tell you. That's, that's kind of up to them and, you know, they haven't really said. They've just made the request right now for us to maintain the gate so that we can maintain the easement. That's sort of the town's interest in all of this.
I will do comment for everyone soon. We're just, we're gonna, we're just gonna discuss first and then I'll do, I'll open up the floor for everyone. So, so, don't worry. Okay. Jean, were you finished?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Peter.
But could we approach the developer and negotiate new terms for the said easement and then go back to town meeting? You know, if we wanna, you know, you know, so, I mean, right now, those are the conditions. But, you know, we can, we can acquire the easement.
Everything in life is negotiable. I just don't know what they'd be willing to negotiate.
Right.
Or can we take the easement by eminent domain? Is that a town option or not?
We can always take something by eminent domain, as long as it's for a public purpose, which this looks like it would be. It would cost us money. That's what comes along with eminent domain.
So, I will, so, I, you know, I, I agree. I think we were in a pickle, right? We, we have an obligation to fix this gate, and we have an easement that we have to honor. I agree. I mean, I know a lot of people who cut through there. I think we've, you know, I've cut through there. I know, you know, I remember when the gate was locked back in the day, when you couldn't get through there, honestly. So, I, you know, I see the, the, you know, the, the reason why people would want it open, but it is private property, and it is a private way. And if, you know, I, I know we all protect our private property. I mean, if it was my private property, and I, you know, I have to respect that at the same time, even though I understand people want to go through the private property to get out and have a, you know, an easier way through. So, at this point, I guess we're, we've all went around, and I could open the floor for public comment. So, how many of you here want the gate? Raise your hand. How many are here to want the gate open? Okay. How many of you are gonna comment this evening? Okay. So, so why don't we do this? We, we've got a lot of people here, we don't want to silence anyone, but we'd be here probably till midnight if we heard from all of you. So, maybe, why don't we pick, you know, say, two or three representatives that you know might want to speak, and then we can maybe issue some more time for, for people to speak on something that we haven't already heard. So, if we said it once, we heard it once, maybe the next guy get up and say something that's alternate to that, just so that we're not hearing it over and over again. It might get you all home quicker as well. So, I don't know who wants to start. Going on up, you're in the front. I guess we'll start with you.
Kevin Cochran, High Ridge Drive. My wife's probably lived there maybe the longest out of everybody here tonight, I'm not sure. Part of the issues we're having is you keep calling this person the landowner, but we don't know who this person is or what their name is. So, it all depends on who you're talking about. The last name, just 'cause it matches, doesn't really hold much weight. It's depending on who you're talking about and who sent an email, or was it formal, was it informal? Because there's a big difference between the two. Also, we're, I actually have all the paperwork from back in 2007, the reasonings for it, the reasonings against it. At the same time, like you said, you've kind of created a monster with leaving that gate open. There's a million different things. As far as fixing the gate, I'll comment real quick. You should really adjust that budget for it because the gate is fine. It's the mechanicals that's bad. It's not 31 grand to fix the mechanicals. The gate is absolutely fine to use, the wheels, everything. I've gone up, looked at it myself. Besides that, as far as the town taking the road, there is a form that the neighbors on High Ridge can file with the town requesting that the town take over the road. Then it would probably go to a meeting or however it works. Our major concern with leaving the gate open would be speed. As of now, it's at times out of control. I call it High Ridge Raceway, where it's a public way and a private road. Police kind of have their hands tied on that. They have done what they could at times. They've put out the speed sign. They've sat on the road. I believe they've pulled people over. So, they've, they've done their job. They can't be everywhere, that's understood. And they have enough issues on another, plenty of other major roads in this town to deal Where the gate has been open for so long, everybody's gotten used to it. I mean, to close that gate, you're not just affecting the residents in the neighborhood, you're affecting the school. You're creating a safety issue with buses. I count the buses that go by my house every day. It's six large buses, roughly four or five short buses. Those are 11 more buses you're putting out onto Scenic Highway that have to take the death corner right after the campground. So, with the way traffic is out on that highway, the irresponsible drivers that we deal with, and the intersection at Nightingale and Scenic Highway is one of the worst intersections on Cape Cod, let alone in the state. So, if, if you really want to take it under some sort of advisement and think about it, you gotta think about the safety issue of everything. We have a lot of parents that actually take the High Ridge cut-through. Yes, speed's an issue with some of them, but they're getting their kids to school safe, they're picking them up safe, and it's, if you've ever gone down Ernest Valeri Road during the hours of 8:30 to 9 o'clock or 3:00 to 3:30, it's an absolute nightmare going to the school and getting out. So, you, you're talking access to the school for, now you're gonna have a gate there that, hopefully it opens this time when an emergency vehicle pulls up to it responding to the school or up in that neighborhood somewhere. As of right now, any concerns about the development going in? That building, it's not even gonna probably start for four or five years. So, I mean, yeah, they're probably clearing land, breaking ground, doing testing, whatever it is. You're talking, that, that, that's another nightmare we can deal with down the road. I mean, and Russo's really a decent person to deal with. I think he'd be more than forgiving on some circumstances to work with the neighborhood and somehow the travel that might create for his tenants to go in through it and not. So, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next person?
One settler's way. The last thing I am is a public speaker, but I'll do the best. It's an important issue. It's a public safety issue, number one. You have a house, you're not gonna have just a front and not a back. You go Nightingale and you got the Scenic Highway, sometimes you can't even get out that way. You, it, it's, emergency vehicles not gonna be able to get down. You got an emergency, an ambulance gonna come down, one entrance, and you got summer traffic? It's a, it's a, really a public safety issue. And if you want it, fix it, then, then you want to spend $30,000? Then spend $30,000, but make it restricted to Nightingale and Pilgrim Pine residents so that they can get access to it. You can put a sign up saying, only residents from Nightingale Estates or Pilgrim Pine can go through that way. If you want to fix it, spend $30,000? I think it's better to spend $30,000 for a detail at Nightingale and Scenic Parkway than to put $30,000 in a gate and keep it up and closing and, and open. But I, I would basically say, if you want to spend the money, then have a sign saying restricted for Nightingale and Pilgrim Pine, and give them a, a, what do you call it? Teleponder. You're gonna, they're gonna, the, I'm not mistaken, the, the public bid is $40 for one of those transceivers, all right? Then it's make it an option, that any resident optional can purchase that for $40, and they can go through that gate. It's this way, it'd be open to the residents of the, of Nightingale and, and, you know, Pilgrim Pine. Okay? Like I said, public speaking is not mine.
You did fine.
But it's an important issue.
You did good.
And it's a public issue. I mean, somebody gets killed going out there, the liability's gonna be on the town. I'm not a lawyer, but, you know, it's, if my kid had no choice but to go up on Nightingale and got killed, guess what? The liability's on you. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Paul Pacillo. I live on Desiree Drive. I think it's a pretty simple, simple scenario. If there's a, say there's a catastrophic car accident somewhere at the, where Nightingale hits the Scenic Highway, and there's a, and my house is burning on Desiree Drive. How do we, how do we get people in and out of there? Or if somebody has an emergency, they have to take someone to a doctor or hospital, and they're trying to get out the back, and there's a gate there, and it's closed. It doesn't make sense, all these people here agree, we had a big meeting at the gate a few weeks ago, that having a gate and blocking people out of the, to be able to get in and out of our neighborhood, there's, there's a couple of hundred houses in that neighborhood between Nightingale, Desiree Drive, Mirasol, and Settlers Way. To have one entrance or exit doesn't make sense for all of those people. So, if there's a problem with the town, the town needs to step up, buy whatever they need to buy, get, get it on, get it on a, somehow or rather raise the money to buy it, and open, leave that gate open. It doesn't make sense to have one entrance to that big neighborhood, and it's a significant neighborhood, if anyone is familiar with it.
Thank you, sir.
I'll let him, I'll go after him.
I'll say a couple more, and then, you know, as long as it's something
As long as it's before midnight.
New and exciting, right?
He turns into a public speaker.
Evening, my name's Kevin Crook. I live at Settlers Way. The number one question I have, who should question the closure of this gate? I've been a resident of town for over eight years, and the gate's been opened, I moved in here. And like everyone says, it would be a major inconvenience to close the gate. And also regards to the covenant, in the covenant states, a violation of the above condition may constitute a termination of said easement. The town violated the easement by not maintaining the gate, keeping the gate closed. Further, everything I look up online saying the quitclaim covenant, it was not adhered to after a period of time becomes null and void. I think that needs to be looked into. And one entrance is not a suitable thing, like other people have said. I'd just like to bring the fact up, in February 2015, at the condominiums down in Bourne, a person was shot, shot and killed, and two other people were shot, when an individual blocked the only access to that condominium complex, and the police could not get in there, fire couldn't get in there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Jillian Gould, Settlers Way. I have lived in Pilgrim Pine since 2006 at two different addresses. The gate has been open since I built my home in 2017. Part of the problem is, we're almost 200 homes, there's over 500 vehicles in our neighborhood that reside there. So, when you get to the intersection at Nightingale, you can only fit about two to three car lanes long, where it is two lanes wide, to take a right and a left. Cars constantly block that intersection through the red light, coming straight down Scenic Highway to go towards the Bourne Rotary. Constantly. You can wait through six, seven lights to make a right, and you can only get out because you're able to make a right on red. So, if you have to make a left there, it, there's no saying how many light cycles you have to wait through. So, now if you're talking about, if you're not the front two cars, you're behind waiting for all the other cars who might even be taking a right to make a left. It's gonna be a nightmare. Not to mention that, but on a personal note, I have a daughter who's been, she's eight, she's been in and out of chemo her entire life. I am in and out of Boston hospitals with her on emergency basis. Sometimes, it's been as often as two or three times a week. And I drive her because we have really shitty pediatric hospitals around here, so I have to go to Waymouth. If I can't get her there quickly, I have to call an ambulance. I can, right now, go out the gate and go up Scenic Highway and get on Route 3. If there's traffic on Scenic Highway and I have to wait at the light at Nightingale, I'm gonna have to call an ambulance every time. Bourne doesn't have a lot of ambulances. I don't want to have to tie up our emergency services every time when I could drive her. It just doesn't make any sense to have us blocked in to the point that now everything becomes emergency. I understand that they would have emergency access, but we don't have emergency access. So, that means we have to make everything an emergency when there's traffic, and that just doesn't seem like a smart thing for the town.
Thank you.
Gary Dayton, 17, Settlers Way. This'll be real quick, okay? It's a safety issue. Couple times it was mentioned, but the safety I'm looking at is, in Massachusetts, the schools are not required to have two egresses for the school, but they do emphasize safety as a priority. So, blocking that gate is gonna create a problem if you have a situation out on Scenic, Scenic Highway. We have tanker trucks going along Scenic Highway all day long. If they're loaded and something happens right there, there's gonna be a problem.
I go through the site with, with you.
And you're all gonna have to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, um, thank you.
So, the gentleman in the green shirt back there is trying to
Where's the gentleman in the back? I, I heard he's been trying to get up for a while. I think maybe we'll take yours, and then maybe we'll review what we've heard before we hear more speakers and see if we've, we've all met the, we've got it all out. How's that?
Don Travis from Settlers Way. Thanks, thanks a lot for the opportunity here. I'd just like to, I guess, get something off of my mind. I can understand, for the life of me, how we could have let something go for 10 years, and all of a sudden, hey, there's a problem. We gotta fix our problem. Why, why did it take 10 years, or why is there a problem? I don't understand that. What I would like to know is, is how many of you people would like to live in that area of 200 homes and have only one way to get in and out? Would you like it? Would you feel comfortable? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, so, I'll do one more, and then I'd like to just review what we've heard, and if it's, if you've got something different to say, if you're, you know, we've heard so far that it's, it's a safety issue, we've heard a few things, so, if
Quitting.
Yeah, quite, lot of different issues, so I'd like to just
Safety, safety.
Safety, safety has been the main, main issue in access, so let's
This isn't safety.
Yes.
My name's Lisa Griffith.
Hi, Lisa.
I live on Mirasol Drive. I've lived there since, well, 14 years now. When I moved in, the gate was open again too, but that's not the issue. The issue is shame on the town. They let, you let head builders build up there. He didn't finish the roads, he didn't finish driveways, he didn't do a lot of things he was supposed to do. But he continued to build on Settlers Way, so that's on the town, shame on the town. Again, yes, we cannot have one way in and out. That's a given. The other issue is, the light is totally, you know, dangerous, so I guess we need to get in touch with the state about that, right? So, we'll have to get in touch with them about that because we can't accept that light. The other light at Edge Hill is a proper light for us to get in and out of. I've almost got killed, actually both those sets of lights, but the worst one is the one at, by the campsite. All right? So
Thank you. So, we've heard from quite a few. We've heard a lot about safety, access in and out. So, does anyone have any sort of different to say? And then I think we'll stop, and then have the select board, we'll go around, let the select board talk. Do you want to, do you want to, do you want to get up and say something, ma'am? Please, go ahead. One more.
It's kind of the same idea, but Karen, who's on the
Yeah, no, say that in the mic, though, so they hear you at, at home.
Karen Luke from Settlers Way.
Thank you.
The Nightingale intersection is horrible, and I don't know how many times, when you're trying to come home, there's an accident there. Just the other day, there was a stalled car there. So, the police won't let you make a left-hand turn. So, we can't get home. They block that light. Accidents, stalled cars, fire, whatever. And how do we get home? We just gonna drive around until it's all cleared up and the glass is gone? It's crazy. If that intersection wasn't so dangerous and so horrible, we wouldn't all be here. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. All right. I appreciate all your, your voices tonight, and I think what I'll do now is go around and deliberate with the select board and let everyone share some thoughts. I don't know who wants to go first. Peter or MJ?
I just want to
I think Peter went, maybe I'll let MJ.
I'll say something about upcoming construction on Scenic Highway.
The median strip, yeah?
So, we are about to start a major median construction project on Scenic Highway, basically between Edge Hill Road and between Edge Hill Road and the light at Nightingale.
Nightingale.
Right? So I do not think that blocking off that gate while that construction is going on is going to be a good idea. I think we definitely need to have that open during that time period. I think we need to contact the state about the Nightingale intersection. I think it was raised as an issue by the Cape Cod Commission when the Bourne Dale School was being built. I know it's being redesigned as part of the Bourne Bridge project, but we really need to have the Cape Cod Commission relook at that intersection and do some crash studies, like, you know, what's the intersection, what's that crash history of that intersection? And we need to determine what the safety is overall for closing that road. I mean, right now, the road, Ernest Valery goes up to the gate, right? And that's a public road. Ernest Valery is a public road, it goes all the way to the gate. What happens, what people do from highway to Ernest Valery is, it's not, we don't have jurisdiction on that. I mean, except for the fact that we have an easement, which I don't think is any longer a good idea. So I don't know why we agreed to it back in 2006, why we didn't just do it. And I don't know why...
Way before me.
The email that we received is public record, correct? So the email that we, that was sent on June 6th was from Mark Heb to the town administration.
Bologna.
You're surprised.
Yeah, Bologna.
A project manager for Heb Builders, Inc., requesting that...
Email from Mark Heb.
And interesting, he says, "When the open gate may have been a convenience for all at some point, we feel due to the above-mentioned concerns and traffic as a result of Google Maps, we are requesting the gate to be closed per the original agreement." So I don't see it. Well, I don't use, I mean, I use the Apple app for my, and it shows, it doesn't show that as a way to go.
Can anyone ask him why they wanted to close the gate? They sent a letter that they wanted to close it.
Excuse me, if you're going to speak, come up to the mic, I'm sorry. I just don't want the people at home to... But it's in the letter, I mean, he gives some...
It is, it is in the email.
The letter is public record in the packet.
Yeah.
And what is the reason that he wants to close this gate?
What took him so long?
Well, let me see where it starts here.
He has great concerns regarding the 300 Unit 40B project.
Yep.
And the potential for future use from this project onto High Ridge Road. We do not anticipate any approvals for this proposed project from the ZBA based on High Ridge Drive being an entrance or egress for the project. This includes the construction of the units and roadways.
And he also mentions the category is, above-mentioned project would be the proposed solar farm, yep.
It would negatively impact safety and traffic to the above neighborhoods.
Well, "The open gate may have been a convenience for all. At some point, we feel due to the above concerns and the traffic as a result of Google Maps, we are requesting that you close the gate." So that's the reason that they gave.
He uses it four times a day. I watch him. It's ridiculous. I know, I've not, I've been in construction for over 30 years. I know the reason. I'm not stupid. I know the reason he wants it shut. That's all I'm going to say. It's a favor.
Go ahead.
He has a right to ask.
Go ahead. Excuse me, sorry.
I think at a minimum, I'd like to have the developer come before the board and see if we can negotiate, see if there is a possibility we can negotiate terms for, you know, to amend the easement and see if we can work this out. I mean, and if not, then we have other options. But, I mean, it's, you know, shame on us for letting the gate, leaving the gate open all those years and now all of a sudden, now all of a sudden we've got to make things right? I mean, it's just, we set the standard by leaving that gate open and not do, and then pass and repass, you know, by the residents, visitors, whoever, you know, so, you know...
So you've been on the board all these years, do you know, do you remember all of this happening? Were you on the board? You were on the board, correct?
I was, I was on the planning board as their representative to the school building committee in 2007, when this was all discussed. I didn't become, I did not come on the select board in 2011, but, and so, in my capacity as a school, as a school building committee member, we needed another access point in and out of Bourne Dale Elementary to make it safe to get people, you know, to get, to get, you know, fire or police just in case, you know, because at the time, the development, there was development going on, what is now, you know, Pilgrim, not Pilgrim Pines, but Nightingale Pond at State's. And then you also had, you know, scenic road was becoming busier and busier. And so, you know, we went, we went to Heb and figured out a way of getting an access point. In fact, Ernest Valery Road, as you see it today, was a hand paper drawing by Jerry Ellis and myself. We took, we took that and went to the superintendent, it was Ed Lamash at the time, and, you know, it was Ed Lamash and maybe John O'Brien before, but we took that and that, and then based on that drawing, it was Senator Reese Murray, State Rep Tom Kehia, myself, and a few others that got the ball rolling, and that's when you got the land swaps and everything else, and that's what you see today with Ernest Valery Road where it is, because the Union Hall is gone, that was on scenic highway, because that was part of the swap between, it was between LaRusso, LaRusso and the town, but then the political side of it was State Rep, well, Tom Kehia, who's now deceased, and Teresa Murray and a few others in Mast Dot. And that's how, that's how Ernest Valery Road came about. Because what happened is, we were looking to replace, we were trying to replace the Hoxie School, and we had, and that was town-owned land that we had taken for tax title, and it was the only decent piece of land that we can put that school on. So we had to figure out access and, you know, safe access, emergency access for that school. So that's, you know, without, without, right, that's, that's the historical perspective of it. But now...
What prompted the gate to stay open?
Yes, thank you.
Was there an occurrence where the gate was prompted? Did it break at that time?
Well, we can't, we can't go back to, you know, former DPW superintendents, because they're both deceased. But the town knew that that gate wasn't working. They didn't take it upon themselves to fix something that was their responsibility, you know? You know, some people, you know, yeah, Seba Mash told the staff, "Don't drive through there," I know that for a fact. But at the same time, you know, some people like, oh, I don't want to sit in line at the light, you know, so, you know, they just took it upon themselves, they left it open because it was convenient for other people. And not, meaning staff, not at the time, it's just, you know, it's just a problem that just went on forever and ever and we did nothing about it.
Okay.
And so, and as MJ stated, Nightingale Pond Road, as, you know, the light at Nightingale Pond down over by the Bourne Senior Park, in the plans that the town administrator, Anne Marie and I have seen, there's going to be a, there's going to be a roundabout there, if the Bourne Bridge project ever comes to fruition. So not only, not only you have obedience stripped down the middle, right, you know, on the tip list that's going to be constructed in the next two, two years, I think it is, I think it's finally coming to fruition, but then all of a sudden, up the road at the Bourne Bridge project is ever done, they're going to rip somebody out to put the cul-de-sac in. So I think maybe we should be talking to Mast Dot as well and see if we can fix the ongoing issues that are, you know, with the light at Nightingale Pond Road. Try to see if we can do something over that small intersection, brand to send be temporary because we don't know what the future's going to bring with Mast Dot and the Bourne Bridge issue, but...
Okay. So...
Sorry, just really quick, if you talked to Mast Dot, can we see if they can put up a do not block intersection sign? Because constantly, everyone blocks it.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting...
Yeah, we're getting outside of weeds, but, you know, but as far as the future goes, we can, I'll leave that alone for now.
All right, so, let's, it's five and nine, let's talk, we've got a lot to go on.
Roads that were, you know, planned and intended that went down here that...
Yeah, yeah, so why don't we do this? We, the discussion here is to request to repair and close the gate at the end of High Ridge Road. So this board needs to make a decision.
This board needs to make a decision on whether or not you want me to pursue a capital article for town meeting.
That's what we're here for, correct? So...
The rest of it should be another agenda item.
Another agenda item, correct. Right. So we have to decide on that this evening, and obviously, that has to go to town meeting if there was an article, and that needs to be voted by the people. It wouldn't be the select board that would vote on that, so...
Well, we set the warrant.
We set the warrant, yes, but still, right, I'm just saying, it's, right, it's got to be voted for it to pass.
But, excuse, but with all due respect, if you believe that it, in minimum, should be closed, I'll come up there and...
We've got one more, this is it, we're getting in the weeds here, and I've already done public comment, so one more, and that is, this is it for tonight. Thank you.
Susan Tierney, Mirasol Drive. If I, your comment that at all, at any event, it should not be closed while this project is going on and this nightmarish construction over the next two years or four years or whatever that is, is true, why would you put it on the warrant and create this discussion if you agree it shouldn't happen in the next four, two to four years? I believe that was the length of that project. And I do just want to say, I know everybody's really stressed, all sorts of safety things, leaving, but entering that neighborhood, I myself was rear-ended, I have a horrific picture of my car was totaled by a 17-year-old who had a license, sitting at that green light, waiting to turn into my neighborhood. And it terrifies me, I think other people here have too, and the cops who were there that night, and the lady who talked about glass all over the road. It terrifies me to sit at that light, to turn into my own neighborhood. And if I was not able to come in the back way 90% of the time, I happened to have gone to CVS that night, which is the only reason I was coming in from that way, it would be horrific. So I guess I respectfully requesting that if you agree it's probably not a good idea to close it now, it's, I think I've heard most of you say, despite the concerns about the legal issue, which I didn't know about until tonight, why would you put it on the warrant? That's my only comment. Thank you.
Well, we are, we're, thank you, very much. And I think we're obligated, we're obligated through the easement to fix the gate if so, but let's go around and let's, let's see what we're going to do here. What's the, what's the pleasure of this board this evening? It's, yeah.
I prefer, I'll put a motion after, we'll see what happens. I prefer that we not go forward with the town beating article to fix the gate and to bring the developer, and not go forward with an article to town beating to replace, to fix the gate, and furthermore, to bring the developer in before the town to see if alternative, an alternative easement can be negotiated.
Okay.
That's really too big zip.
That's a...
You can vote it down or take, no, I can't, no second, it dies.
Maybe, you want to combine, yeah, let's...
I feel like that's combining issues. I definitely feel we should have a conversation with developer about the future of...
But we need to vote on one or the other.
But we need to meet our obligations about the easement, and we should...
Well, that's why we want to talk to developer, because we have to meet the terms of the easement, so I want, so it is, it is relevant.
So Peter, Peter has a motion, are you willing to amend it or change it maybe, so that it's...
Well, I'll make two separate motions if you want.
All right.
I mean, so my first motion is, I would draw that, my first motion is to not go forward with the request to put, to repair and close the gate at the end of High Ridge Road at this time.
All right, so we have a motion from Peter to not put the capital budget in, okay?
He will second that.
He will second, all right.
Wait a minute. Okay.
Is that okay? So we have a...
You're to not, to not repair the gate?
Yes.
To not put the, put it on...
In essence...
Not put a capital article at the special town meeting.
At this time, right?
This fall.
Okay. Not put a capital article at special town meeting to repair the gate.
Okay, so we have a motion from Peter, second from MJ, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I will go, roll call vote, Anne Marie.
I have to abstain because I'm, I'm, yeah. There's so much information here that I'm not ready to vote.
Jean?
I'm just not ready to vote.
I, yeah, I...
Too much information.
I can't, I can't make a decision right now without further knowledge of the repercussions of such decisions, so I feel like I'm missing something.
Two abstains?
She said, um...
Abstain.
All right, so Peter?
On my motion, yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Unbelievable. I'm going to abstain as well, because I need more information.
All right, so now, procedurally, you have three people who chose not to vote, so does the motion carry 2-0?
Yep.
There's no quorum, right?
No, there's no quorum.
Yeah.
No, there's...
Because we don't have a majority and there's no quorum.
But we didn't get a motion to put it on either, it just, he did a motion not to, so...
My suggestion would be is, is that you just put this over to another meeting at this point? If you've got three board members who haven't, you clearly need to talk about it more.
Just to put it on an agenda again, until we have a little more information.
We're not another agenda, so that we don't, yes.
Because there's, we need some guidance.
What are you looking for? What are you looking for? What information?
We need some guidance on not being in compliance with this policy and legally, what's our responsibility and the impact to the town if we do not comply with this easement? That's an important question to answer.
What about asking a motion to speak with Mark Heb?
So, we're going to, I think maybe the continued...
You got to speak with Brian Heb.
Of the motion. So let's continue.
The owner of the road is Brian Heb.
So let's put another mo, do we need another motion then to...
Well, actually, let's do this.
No more, I'm sorry, sir, we're done with comments.
What's going to keep the owner from putting, putting the gate in himself?
Well, that's what I, yeah, that's... The gate's owned by, right? Right. There's so many questions.
There is nothing.
There's nothing, yeah.
Non-compliance with federal rights, federal statutes.
Yeah, yes, okay, thank you, sorry.
You're going to have to go to the room.
Motion to the kinder this matter to a future meeting.
All right, so Peter made a motion to continue this matter to refer to another meeting. So we have a motion from Peter, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Anne Marie. All right. Roll call vote, Anne Marie.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
MJ.
Abstain.
Okay. Yes.
Four, zero, one.
One. At least, you know, it didn't get...
The gate's reached that.
All right. Okay. That was a long process. We'll see you next time, that's... I will have to, we'll have to look at the agendas and get it on. We'll let you know in advance, it'll be up before...
So is this going to be in another meeting?
Yes.
I'll let you guys, it'll be posted and everybody will know when it will be.
Yes, it'll be, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
We'll come with more people.
Yeah, sure.
All right.
You know, it's scary in that road zone.
Yeah, it would have to be like at the high school or something.
I was explaining out there, I said we can't move between...
Bob, I'm sorry.
...to the auditorium, the cameras.
Yeah. Because he asked about that.
I'm taking a minute, I'm taking a minute just to bathe.
Poor Kevin.
It's hilarious and pathetic.
All right, we're taking two seconds to go to the bathroom.
Question, are we back here in October?
We'll have to look at the agendas and find out.
We'll look at the agenda, we are next.
It'll be posted.
I'd just say one thing, please. Could you maybe have this system fixed? You can't hear anything.
I know, we need a speaker back there.
Yeah, you do. It's hard.
I know, we haven't, we've actually had to be able to word that before, we're going to work on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Usually a week.
Well, so the, the emergency access covers that.
And Peter's really good at posting.
It's on the website. If you go to the town calendar, the entire meeting packet is on.
You know, they couldn't have any, for this nine hundred feet.
And you can see all the documents.
Waiting patiently.
Yep. So if you go, if you go to the meeting date tonight, it'll give you the agenda and it'll give you all of the documents.
Yep. All right.
See what he says.
Yep, it's there.
I appreciate it. But it's just, my thing, they transfer it.
Of course. My pleasure.
Sorry.
All right, they back. Peter, just wait, Peter and Jean here. That was the most challenged today. I just like, I guess I got my, 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 my select board, my, my select board chair legs today. What's the word? What is it when you say you get the, you get your?
Smoothest silk.
What is it? What is it when you get your, oh, how do you say it? I got my wings. Is that what it is? Yeah, I got my, I got my select board chair wings today for sure. I did my best with what I had. I wanted to hear people, so I was doing my best to hear as many as I could. So here we are at nine something. Sorry for that.
Where's Jean?
Bathroom. She went to the bathroom.
Well, I could probably start, right? We have.
Yeah, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum, so. Thank you, sir. We have on the agenda next is a permitting and CCC license update for Cape Way Cannabis, just a follow-up from July fifteenth.
Thank you.
Just to give you an update, we're, we had a panel over from our engineer. He's supposed to have the rest of our stuff to the planning board this week. When this was put into place, when we started this a couple of years ago and all this, I think the purpose of having these updates and having us get through the planning board and the board of health was to make sure that no one was sitting on a cannabis license and just waiting to see what's happened. Peter was at our facility yesterday, or yesterday, Peter, yeah, yesterday. We are not sitting on our license. We have over, Peter could tell you the building is almost completed inside. Five hundred thousand dollars' worth of work has been done on this project. We're just waiting for a couple of pieces from our, our engineer and to complete the packet for the planning and then go to the planning board. We've been through the board of health and received that. We, we hope to have it done in the next week or so. We've been on him. He had, he had some personal issues that put us all behind. So I apologize. We still haven't completed our packet with the planning board, but they, they have a submitted application. And as you can see from some of the photos I've shown you, the store is almost done inside. We're at the very end of finishing it. It's, we have racks inside, we have storage. It's all, the retail store is almost ninety-five percent complete. It's just a little cosmetic stuff that, all the mechanicals are all done in the facility and everything else.
Awesome.
So if you give us a couple, till we get to the planning board and then we'll come back and, and review it with you again.
Thank you for the update.
You, you agree with what?
Ooh, that was, oh, crazy. Yeah, I mean, I think it's good to see progress. I think I'll just go around real quick for the select board. If anybody has any quick comments or any, any questions for, for our applicant?
Can we get refreshed on exactly what we voted on the fifteenth of July? It was the fifteenth of July.
So we voted to do a thirty-day, go ahead, Marley.
Yep. The vote was to have the applicant apply with the planning board for a site plan review within thirty days and report back to the select board within sixty days.
And we have put our application in. They asked, requested for some more information and we're waiting on our engineer to get that.
Okay, so we have, we exceeded the, do we have, do we need to revoke that just to extend it a little longer or do we?
Well, the application is not complete, so I think you do need to address the fact that the site plan review application was not, is still not complete.
It's not, I haven't submitted a complete application to the planning board.
We submitted an application and we came back with more material and we're waiting on our engineer to get that more material.
Okay.
But in our engineer met with Chris Farrell from the planning board last Wednesday and they reviewed the final few pieces that they're waiting for.
Okay. Go ahead, Jean.
Are you on the schedule or what's your?
We're still waiting for a few pieces to be submitted into the application. Our engineers still will have.
So you still really don't know how, how, I mean, it's reasonable amount of time, but?
Yeah, and, and Chris from the planning board believes that.
Sounds like it's done.
There's nothing done to the site. We've not changed any driveways, any buildings or anything like that, that it should go through and review one evening.
Well, I understand that. As a former member of the planning board though, it was always a, you know, we've, we've worked towards having the applications be complete and especially the landscaping and the exterior and the parts that usually get dropped off and pushed aside to the last minute. You know, there's been a concerted effort to have all that presented at, at once with the application. So how long, I mean, do you see like within thirty days having a complete application or?
Well, thirty days would be fine. I think we should have.
I just.
And again, when we were going through this whole process with the town and everything, the reason for this was so that no one was sitting on an application and we're clearly not sitting on an application. Like you can see the pictures there, there's some pictures there. Facility's ninety percent done.
On the inside, yeah. From the outside looking in.
It, um, but we're, it really is doing some, just trimming back of bushes and that kind of stuff and, and some light landscaping and some cleaning up of the parking lot.
Well, we don't know what, we, we don't know what the site plan approval is gonna be if, or, you know, and, and if they're gonna want, you know.
So if we could ask for another thirty-day extension on this, that would be helpful.
Because, yeah, you're doing all the work inside and it's great. It really is. I saw it all. It looks great, but we don't know what the planning boards go into condition. You know, it's like the copper for the horse, you know, but.
Yeah, and I, sorry.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
I can see, and I know there's situations where I could see it going back and forth, maybe having to come back to another meeting. It depends on how much you put forth in the first proposal and it's, it's, we're just guessing at this point how many times it may go back and forth before approval. So it seems reasonable to say a month, but I know they have a busy schedule as well and.
Okay.
This is our struggle.
But the work you've done is great.
Yeah.
Yeah, no question. It's really, it's really nice, secure facility.
All right, so do we have, so we're gonna need an extension or do we have, what's the select board's pleasure? Does anybody have any more comments? Real quick, I guess first. Questions, MJ? Do you have any questions for our applicant?
No, I'd just say, I'd make a motion to.
Forty-five days?
Extend the app, the complete application to the planning board within thirty days.
Thirty days.
And then another update within sixty days.
Okay, so we, we have a motion on the floor by MJ and a second for Anne Marie. I mean, sorry, Jean. I don't know why I'm, got you on my mind, I guess. Jean, and I'll do roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Um, yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on. So we have to, and I know I see Mr. Lighten is here for this one, I do believe. Oh, wait, no, maybe not.
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay. Discuss a preliminary vote of Pecassett Woods petition, section four point three of the public road layout and acceptance policy.
Jump in?
Sure, right, go right at it.
So, so I'll speak to the entire year because that's kind of where we would be right now. I know we only had one petition, but the Pecassett Woods Association submitted their petition for us to accept Spinnaker Lane and Daniel Webster Lane. They, they met all the requirements. Signatures are there. We have, I think, eighty percent for Spinnaker and ninety percent for Daniel Webster. We did our preliminary review. We recognized that there were deficiencies. I did give you guys a memo. Real quickly, I just, to see an association be together, I know a lot of, you know, homeowners associations get a bad look for, you know, kind of regulating and things like that, but here it's really, really helpful in our process that there is representation. And I can't stress enough how great it's been to work with them and Susan. You know, it doesn't always work out that way. We're fumbling through. Susan Perry and their leadership team with that group really did a good job putting this together and working with us. Because kind of in our policy, we do outline, meet with us, talk with us. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things to understand and it was, it was good to work with them. But those were the only petitions that we had. They meet all the requirements. We have plans on file. Matt and I did the inspection. They do crack seal. I mean, that's the other part of the association. They, they maintain their catch basins. They, they crack seal their cracks. So not all thirty-five-year-old roads are built the same. And this one, I think, was in pretty good condition. So the amount of work we're gonna do is, it's, the price is gonna be high, but the work, I mean, it could be higher, is what I'm trying to say. So if the road is not brand new, we're supposed to make the recommendation to you guys that there's a certain amount of work that needs to be done. The association is on board, at least up until this point. They've, you know, indicated that they are willing to go forward with the betterment. So with that said, I think I'll take any questions or comments that you guys have.
All right, I'll go around. Fuck board. MJ, anything?
So this will be at the annual town meeting in May, right?
Yeah.
And it's sometime between now and then. We'll get the estimate on the betterments and all that other stuff to have.
Very soon.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. This is.
A long time.
It's big.
Yeah.
It's big. We've been talking about this for years, so it's cool. And it's a good one to start with, in my opinion.
It's great.
Go ahead.
Suzie Perry, I think, is from the neighborhood. She's on the screen.
Hi, Suzie. We see you're up there. Do you have any comments?
Hello. Yes. Thank you so much for your patience with us as we, you know, navigated this rather challenging policy. You were so patient with us, so hopefully everything from here on in will go smoothly. Fingers crossed, but you guys have been amazing. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Suzie. We appreciate it and appreciate the work you've done as well. So thank you. I'm sure it was, it helps that you were good to work with for, for Tim and the town, so thank you. Anyone else?
So do we need to make the motion, a motion here? I mean, other.
Yeah, instead of put an emery vote, I'm trying to see what the vote's for.
So the Pecassett, to continue moving forward, the Pecassett Woods petition, section four point three of the public road layout and acceptance policy?
Yep. So it says, so the policy says, once the engineering department has completed its preliminary review of the petitioned road, the select board may hold a preliminary vote of intent to lay out the road as a public way.
Okay, so.
So moved.
So Peter made the motion and MJ second. Peter motioned, MJ second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Yes.
And can I please ask for one more?
Sure.
Action? So following an affirmative preliminary vote to lay out a road as a public way pursuant to MGL chapter forty-one, section eighty-one G, the select board will refer the matter to the planning board for a recommendation. So I think it makes sense to also refer, to have the vote tonight to refer, when we're ready, to refer the matter to the planning board.
All right, do we have a motion to refer the matter to the planning board?
So moved.
All right, motion by MJ. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jean. Roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Zero. All right.
Really good.
And I think you're up next anyhow, so you could probably stay. We've got a, so that's done and we have a dis, number eight. And you need something?
No, there's another, there's another Spinnaker Lane person on the screen. I don't know what.
Claudine.
Claudine, you know, I don't know.
She's coming on. I don't know if she has any comments. I think, it looks like our audio is still trying to click on. Well, I mean, I can always.
She's late.
All right, so we'll, we'll move on to number eight. Discussion and possible vote to transfer the jurisdiction of eighty-eight Puritan Drive to the Conservation Commission.
Puritan Road, not Puritan Drive.
Sorry, Puritan, yeah, Puritan Drive it says, but it's Puritan Road.
Puritan Road.
Yeah. I know, I was looking at it like, wait a minute. So, yes, so discussion and possible vote to transfer the jurisdiction of eighty-eight Puritan Road to the Conservation Commission. You have the floor.
Sure. So this is sequential to when we took the vote.
Oh, it's echoing. She's on now. We have to hit my voice.
She's good.
All right, sorry, Tim.
So we voted at the special town meeting, October twenty twenty-four, to acquire this three and a half acre parcel. It's part of our Queen Sewell Green Stormwater Improvement Project. With this vote, we'd be looking to put it into the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction with the first deed as opposed to maybe a transfer later on. But the motion in the fall town meeting was for either the Conservation Commission or the select board to take ownership of it. But I think with the formality of it, I discussed with town council that this was the way to do it. Conservation Commission took up that vote last Thursday. They approved it. They have their signature page taken care of. That's what you have tonight before you.
Is this the motion in the pack, in the motion? Is this the motion we should be making?
In the packet, yes.
In the packet, yeah.
Moved at the conserv, that the conservation vote in accordance with general law, chapter forty, section eight C, and acting pursuant to the votes under article ten of October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, special town meeting, attested copies of which are attached here to do hereby approve the acceptance by the town of born Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission, said land being dedicated to the public for open space and drainage purposes as described in the quick claim deed from Lila S. Austin, which land is under the care, custody, management, and control of the Conservation Commission for purposes authorized by the Community Preservation Act, Mass. General Law, chapter forty-four B, and Massachusetts General Law's chapter one eighty-four, section thirty-one, including open space purposes and to allow for drainage accommodations to the existing parking lot adjacent to the premises.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from MJ, very well read, and a second from Peter. Roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. All right, zero, zero. We're all set. Tim, thank you so much for your hard work there.
Actually, the next item is Tim too.
See, you are just popular. Town meeting preparation for October twentieth?
Yeah.
Additional funds for ongoing monitoring of the soil cleanup at the community building. Is that the one?
Yes.
I guess I hadn't been here in a while. So I have quotes for about the next year's worth of work, but this will be ongoing. The incido, incido chemical oxidation that we did twenty twenty-three showed really good progress, but we didn't meet our goal at one well. We targeted eight different monitoring wells and we're meeting all of our standards for everything except for specifically xylanes at IW eight, which is pretty much ground zero for where the remediation site was. So we're working with Paracorp on that. They gave us some numbers, but we're gonna ask them for more numbers cost-wise going forward. You know, it's something that we may want to try to do another task where we target creating oxygen amongst the soil gas, which helps really eat this specific thing. But right now, monitoring is, is the only thing that's required. So working with DEP, we've been working with them really closely on this. Right now, monitoring's the only thing that's required. Because we did some work a couple of years ago, there's still potential progress that could be made. So right now, we're seeing the numbers come down, but just not as fast as we would really like them to. So I should have a finalized article to you by the end of the week.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
So we do plan on having this one on the capital warrant.
Okay. Next is B, is in a budget adjustment, library staffing.
Yep, so briefly, for the budget adjustments, I will be coming before you for a budget adjustment for the library. And the reason I'm doing it now instead of at the annual town meeting is that right now we have two vacant positions. We have two part-time vacancies. One vacancy will, will happen at the end of this month. So if I kind of take advantage of this window, then I won't be impacting any incumbent employees. And the request is, right now we have a vac, we have a part-time position that is not benefited. My recommendation is that remain part-time, not benefited. We also have a part-time position that is benefited and the change will be to turn that to a full-time position. So the, we're already got the benefits in the budget and it would be the change in hours, the change in wages from twenty hours a week to thirty-seven and a half hours a week. And that will really give the library director a lot of flexibility in covering the evening schedules and the Saturday schedules. It's, it's an aggressive schedule for our staffing and if someone gets sick or is on vacation, it, you know, we do have substitutes, but having that ability to cover the gaps in the schedule would be very beneficial. And because of the vacancies, I feel like the timing is right. So that'll be, you'll see that on your sheet for budget adjustments for fall town meeting.
So this will be a new full-time benefited position that will go out, you know, for advertisement?
Well, it'll go within the group first.
Yeah.
But yes, it would, we would take, that part-time position would go away and it would be replaced with a full-time position.
Yeah, and subject to the collective bargain agreement and, yeah, so.
All right, the next is the preliminary warrant and motions, discuss assigning articles
So I did, um, include the, the very first draft of the warrant and the start of the motions. I, I just, if you can just take a look at those, just so you, everyone's prepared on what is in the warrant this year for the fall, um, and then you can talk about how you want to split them up, um, at your next meeting. I will say that I met with the finance director today. One of the draft articles was an OPEB transfer. She's actually recommending that we wait to the spring special and do the OPEB transfer at, at the spring special. So Erica will probably not be moving forward with the OPEB transfer at the fall, but she will be reaching out to you, Melissa, as the trustee, um, to schedule a meeting before we start building the budget, probably sometime in November-ish, but you'll be hearing from her.
Okay, perfect.
If, I know, I know I've been looking at articles to see what I want, but I'll guess in case I'm at the next meeting when we do this, I'm interested in articles ten, eleven.
Okay, well, I was gonna actually, I mean, we were gonna talk about the next meeting, but my thought was I would assign them and then let people tell me, um, you know, if they don't like them. I thought it might be the easiest way, but I'll make a note of that for you.
Yeah, if ten, eleven.
Cause I have, you know, yeah.
Cause we have thirteen, we'll have twelve articles, so yeah.
Yeah.
Some people take three, some will take two.
All right, perfect. So next we have the, sorry Todd, been a long night for you. We have a discussion about the draft charge for the library building committee. I don't know, do you wanna, Marlene, do you wanna have this, Todd, come on up and speak? I know we were, we were waiting to hear from you and.
I gotta, that's something so we can follow along as I read something.
Thanks, Todd.
Yeah, it's a special one for you.
Sure.
Peter, not special.
Understood.
Thank you.
There might be a couple others stuck together.
Yeah, I'll give one to Ann Marie.
Thanks. Got it.
This is self-explanatory and basically taken right out of the minutes of our August twenty-eighth meeting. I guess I should identify myself as Todd Benedict, chairman of the library board of trustees. First of all, I want to thank you all for your indulgence on allowing us to address the, uh, the building committee at our August twenty-eighth meeting. And I'm just gonna read this and we can follow along. It's just nice and simple. At the August twenty-eighth, uh, monthly meeting of the trustees, uh, the make, the makeup of the Jonathan Bourne Public, uh, Public Library Building Committee was discussed as an agenda item. The trustees had copies of the makeup and charge of library buildings that have been formed in various municipalities across the state of Massachusetts. We had about four or five, I think, from various towns. Because each library has different needs and wants, we felt beneficial to educate ourselves to have a better understanding of committee duties and responsibilities of the committee and how best we could provide input to the draft document dated seven fifteen, ooh, that should be twenty twenty-five, not oh five. Excuse me. Our discussion was focused on the membership of the committee rather than the charge of the committee. We felt that the charge was pretty self-explanatory of what the building committee's duties and responsibilities were. So our recommendations to the select board and town administrator is as follows. Increase the committee membership to nine rather than the seven listed in the current draft. And as you follow down, it's a one select board, the library director. One change is two trustees versus one trustee. Warrant planning committee, planning board or somebody from that genre of town agencies. Community member with construction experience in the building trades, possibly an architect, an engineer, somebody with very good skills. Member of the finance committee and a town resident, preferably a library patron. This is key in the bottom. The trustees discussed the possibility of adding others on ad hoc basis as the need may arise, such as friends of the library and a towny, other, uh, an attorney, a towny, attorney and other town agents as needed. And the reason we felt ad hoc, uh, consultants, uh, don't need to be part of the full-time committee. They would be sitting there for a couple of years, i.e. the friends who will probably be asked for a significant donation. I don't know if they need to be full-time members of the committee, but we could bring them in on an ad hoc basis. I don't know what the town charter says about this. I, I don't know the, how this may work or may not work. But, uh, such as an attorney, I think the original charge had an attorney on there. Do we really need an attorney in the early stages of this? I, I don't know the answer to that, but that was our discussion and that's what we came up with. So these are our suggestions to the board. We know that the whole building committee charge and makeup is certainly not written in stone yet, but there are ways to go.
Thank you.
But I do appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Todd. Appreciate it. All right, so I guess I'll go around to the select board. If you have any comments, questions for Todd?
Yes, please.
I'm okay with what's, uh, what's presented for us, membership.
Okay.
I'm all right with it.
Nine?
Yeah, I have no problem having nine. I've asked what they want, you know, they're the ones that have to sell this to town meetings, so, you know. I know seven's been a lot, but if they want, you know, if they feel nine is best for them, then I have no problem with it. It just means you're gonna have to need, the problem with more members means a higher quorum threshold. So if you go nine, you gotta have five showing up at all times before you can open a meeting. So that's, and I know sometimes committees get too big and all of a sudden it's, you know, it becomes counterproductive. So seven's been the sweet spot, but if you think that nine works, I don't mind supporting nine.
And it, I don't think there's anything preventing us from revisiting it and discussing a seven with, with a different makeup or anything like that, you know. This is just a suggestion that we came up with after an hour's worth of discussion.
All right, anybody else?
I do like the suggestions. Nine is a big committee. It's also, these are meetings where other people can attend. So there can be other input from other people that may not be members in the committee, but they can certainly take part. So you can still have, you know, robust discussions and not necessarily have that, um, threshold for five.
You can have outside guests that just, as long as they're not voting now.
They're all, they're all public meetings, so.
Yeah.
Anybody can attend, friends of the library, any, anyone can attend from the public.
And then I would add, you could also certainly invite staff or make requests, you know, or do something to have someone come and advise, rather than having an ad hoc position or adding extra to it. But I see your intent. I think that's good.
Good. But when we start, yeah, you know, when we, during the feasibility study, that whole process, we, at some point in time, we had more of the staff come because it generated, you know, the, it generated conversation specific to what the needs were, right? So at any point, given point in time, you know, the, doesn't, the committee can ask for additional members, even trustees or whatever the case may be, more library staff, et cetera, um, to, to weigh in.
Now, let me ask a question of the board. How would you feel about not having a town council type person or a lawyer? I think the original charge had an attorney on it.
The original, it, that was one of the recommendations, the, um, Icewind Building Committee has an attorney on their committee.
It just happens, it just happened to work out that way.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
That's, that's all we were talking about is do we really need an attorney for however long this committee's gonna be in?
Well, also you have your OPM and you have, you have your OPM and the architect. They work for you, you know, once they're retained. So the OPM has all, you know, can, can help out a lot with that stuff.
Yeah.
Good. This gives me something to bring back.
Provided you get one that.